Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Note the meeting dates and the change of venue for the next meeting at Westchester Community College Library. I'm sure that the planning department will send us a map-
Yes.
-and parking arrangements and all that sort of good stuff. And apparently there will be some additional changes of venue in the future to get this board all around the county. I guess perhaps it's a public meeting, so people can attend if they would so choose. Okay, we have the minutes of the April 3rd meeting. Any comments from anyone? Changes, corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 3rd meeting?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who was the second?
Okay, thank you.
Who was the second?
Holly.
The only particular remark I have is again to request that the airport master plan be brought before this board. You'll see on the agenda, we have a minor issue relating, actually two minor issues relating to the airport. Right. And so I would like to get the, we'll vote on this today, but I'd like to get the larger picture.
Yes, no problem. All right, so first off, I want to thank those of you that came to the WOMP training on April 19th. I thought it went really, really well. We had RPA there, and Naomi was also there doing an update on transportation, so it was really well attended. We had a lot of planning board members there. We had almost the full Housing Opportunity Commission was there. WOMP has one last training coming up for their spring land use training institute, so if anybody still needs some hours, it's gonna, their last training is gonna be on May 16th from 6:30 to 9:00 at the Pace Judicial Institute. Anybody who's an attorney and needs some CLE credits, this is the evening that you can get your CLE credits. It is a land use law update, and so one of the focuses of it is also gonna be on some of the more recent seeker cases. So it is definitely relevant for planning and zoning board members as well as for any attorneys that might want to attend. Last Friday, the county hosted its 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Law at Pace also, and so it was really well attended. They had over 100 people that came, and they handed out the first Lois Bronze Champion for Fair Housing Award to Ruth Hassel-Thompson, the former state senator, which was really, really nice. Actually, the family of Lois Bronze was there. It was really nice to see her, her daughter and her grandson were there. So, you know, at least the county has marked the anniversary, the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. And as Richard mentioned, our June meeting, it was a recommendation of the transition team that we move the county planning board meetings to other locations. So I would like to get a sense from members where else, what other county facilities would you like to get an understanding of? And so Richard's mention of the airport, it would make sense to actually have a meeting at the airport, let you all, you know, see what's happening out there and get a focus on updates and stuff like that that's happening out there. But are there other locations? Do you want to go to Grasslands? Do you want to go to Lasden? Do you want to go up county, South County, the Murph? I don't, I don't know really if there's any particular interest in any county facilities that-
Playland.
Playlands? Okay. That's, yeah, that would be good.
Grasslands.
Grasslands, okay.
And Lasden, also, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
They have that beautiful glass-
Right.
Structure they put up, yeah.
Right.
What do you-
(laughing). Each one of the golf courses, each in their own time.
You're welcome to the county center, too.
Okay, yeah, that's true. The county center is-
Basier and-
More centrally located. So, okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's really all for my remarks.
Just to follow up with what you said about getting credits, it's nice that we're giving lawyers credits for attending this, but we're not giving planners credits for their continuing education.
No, actually, because it is put on by the law school. If you send me your registration certificate, I can note it as training. So that's fine. If you just send me, Holly's already, already sent me her. So if you did attend and you have your registration, you can send me that.
So for the last one as well as the next one?
The one on the 19th, yes.
Okay, good.
Yep, send me that, and I can, I'll make that note.
Okay. The next item agenda is the referrals. I'm gonna start by saying I need to accuse from two items. The Chappaqua Crossing item and the edge on the Hudson item. I was a consultant on both of those developments. Any other comments on the referrals? Just that we seem to have a lot of stuff going on. The economy must be picking up. We have several bigger projects that are moving ahead, I guess, at this point.
I just noticed in the Marinerneck, there's a, I guess, a moratorium on new projects or something? I was just curious.
That's what they were proposing.
Anybody, just curious about that? If there's any information on that.
The moratorium that Marinerneck is proposing.
Oh, right. And it was mostly just, according to the local, what they submitted, there was a concern about, well, there's been a bunch of multifamily projects that have been recently proposed and approved. And then, as you know, there was that subdivision that we looked at two meetings ago. And so they wanted to kind of take a break and kind of look at the traffic and school impacts of these projects and figure out whether or not they needed to make changes to their ordinances. So they wanted a six-month period to do that.
No, I was also curious in regard to Marinerneck because they have been let go lawsuit in regard to one of the developments by the water.
Okay.
And it was addressed the last time, but I don't know what happened with the lawsuit.
That wasn't spoken, that was not included in what we received, so we don't, we only know what they submitted, and that was not contained in that.
Unfortunately, with many of the referrals, we never know whether the municipality actually takes action on what they've proposed or what we've recommended. So we, we can follow up on it if there's something specific for us to look into. Dwight, one of the things in terms of your comment about the economy must be approving, we actually heard that New Rochelle may have set, their planning board may have set a record in that they approved 1,300 housing units last week.
Wow.
Yes, last Tuesday, so (laugh) that says a lot for the economy, I think, so.
It's the development you were talking about, the Hampshire Country Club?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's the village in Marinerneck that has both moratorium and town.
I did get an email from someone I know in Mount Vernon who thanked the board and appreciated the comment that was made on the 152 South 12th Avenue referral, which is in this package, which recommended that the city not keep doing use variances and use variances and use variances, but should take a larger view and develop a master plan for some of this. And so we don't usually get too many appreciations of actions made by this board, so I just wanted to let everyone know about that.
Yeah, curiosity about the Cave Avenue and Saxonville Park rezoning in White Plains? Just give me a little more snapshot of what was just-
Okay. My understanding of that was that in this case, there were a bunch of lots that were already developed, and the houses were essentially non-conforming. This just changes the zoning to match what is currently there, because the case, what was happening was when an individual lot owner needed to get an approval, even for something minor, it would almost always trigger an area variance, which would require extra review and extra time for approval. So the line of thinking was, well, if we change the zoning to fit the existing conditions, then when these landowners come in for approvals, they won't need to obtain variances.
So an R1 7.5 is a 7.5 acre or 7.5 thousand square feet?
It changes ordinance by ordinance.
You have R1.5 zoning.
Right. Yeah, that would, that would basically be the lot size. My guess would be that it's a 7,500 square foot lot.
Okay, so somebody big, right?
Yeah, as opposed to a 5,000 square foot lot.
Okay.
So basically, for whatever reason, these lots were, these properties were zoned a certain way, yet none of them on that entire street were conforming. So this basically just makes the zoning reflect the current character, and you would not expect to see radical changes to the built environment. It would basically just kind of stay as it is. It would just mean that the burden to the homeowner to make an improvement to their property would be lessened because they wouldn't have to get a use variant, I mean, area variance for what they wanted to do.
Any other comments on the referrals? Can I have a motion to accept them with the comments that have been made?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Matters for Planning Board Action. Capital budget amendment for removal of runway 1129 and runway 1634, obstructions. I think Jim is gonna present on the-
We're gonna have you by the microphone.
I'll talk. So I want to point a few things out. Good morning, everybody. Jim Antonasio with Westchester DTWNT's Airport Division. Can you flip to the airport?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. County Airport, located in three municipalities, Harrison, North Castle, and Rybrook. We're a two-runway airport, runway 1634, which is our main commercial, and runway 1129, which is primarily used for light general aviation. I just want to point out that on runway 1129, on the Connecticut end, the takeoff and landing threshold has been displaced. We're currently here, and we're possibly going over to here, and thus, the request for this project. Back in December, the FAA directed the county to request a grant this year to do survey and analysis of obstructions in the flight paths for all four runway ends. So that, that's what AO 136 is. The request is for $250,000. Ninety percent of that will be federal funds, 5% will be a New York State match, and 5% will be a local match out of the airport special revenue fund. Relatively simple project, just survey analysis. We're looking mostly for trees that have grown up into the flight paths. Any questions?
The, how come the money is, so you're saying it has a county share of 13,000?
Yes, approximately 5%. Grant is assumed to be 250,000, so we have a 5% share that comes out of airport special-
It comes out of the airport special revenue.
Airport special revenue fund, yes. There's no impact of accounting tax levy with this project.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding this? Where, actually, where are the obstructions?
Can you, can you, the analysis will take place from the end of each runway. The bulk of them are close, but some of these, some of the survey work will be as far out as 8,000, 8,000 feet.
So they're actually looking at the height of the trees, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're re-verifying things that could be as far as 8,000 feet away. But, yes.
So you're like tree-topping as you go along?
That's what they're looking for, and it's based on the flight path planes that, that project go for each runway end.
This is just survey?
Just survey and analysis. There'll be future projects federally funded to do environmental review, design, and potentially removal in the future.
Did you say there was a current issue?
There's a current issue on the Connecticut end, yes. That's existed for a good 30 years, which has caused the airport's landing threshold to go from the end of the runway back to here, and due to tree growth, we're currently looking at pulling it back to here.
That's on adjacent property, right?
That's all in Connecticut. Connecticut property line is right here. Also, this runway points up at a incline hill, mountain, so further complicate the issue.
And that's the shorter runway, that's the more-
That's the shorter runway, which is mostly used for light GA.
Right.
Where you would put light planes.
Right.
The bulk of air traffic is on the main runway.
By shortening it further, will that limit the types of planes that will be able to-
That is why the FAA is directing the county to do this survey. In order to maintain our certification, they want us to be in the process of identifying these obstructions and potentially, in the near future, coming up with a way to mitigate them.
But in the interim, it will not affect the type-
It'll not affect the certification on the runway.
What, what if any impact, if, if everything is verified and it comes to light that obstructions exist over the Connecticut border, then upon who does that obligation fall to remedy the issue?
It's, it's going to fall on the county eventually, but currently, what we're working with the FAA on is adding instrumentation landing here to keep the threshold over here. With the, with the, I'm not an aviation person, but what I understand is, once we put instrumentation here, the pitch on the flight path can go up quite a bit and takes, takes the planes out of the current issue with the trees. But it's gonna be a future policy decision the county's gonna have to address.
Trees on the Connecticut side, if they, if it's found that they, it's in the best interest to have them removed, that, is that going, that-
They have to negotiate with the property owner.
With Connecticut.
Yeah, they have to negotiate with the property owner.
Yes, the county will have to work with the property owners, yes.
Does this-
It's not the first time.
... increase the number of flights that we have in and out now, being a jet mover?
No, no, it doesn't. Again, this is the light GA runway. This is not heavily used.
This model is private planes.
It's mostly small planes, small commercial flights, meaning prop type planes. The bulk of our air traffic is on 1634.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve this capital budget amendment?
Please.
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next, new homeland acquisition, 5 Hudson Street Yonkers. Kim, you're up.
I'm Kim Hong with the county planning department. Today, we have two housing developments. The first one is 5 Hudson Street on City of Yonkers. It's downtown southwest Yonkers and walking distance to the waterfront and Getty Square. There's shopping and transportation in the area. On the right is 5 Hudson Street, the West Hab building, and on the left is the YMCA, which is historic and the West Hab building is not. West Hab currently leases the building, and they've requested funds to purchase the building because the owner intends to sell it and to maintain the affordable units. West Hab will buy the building, reduce debt, and make improvements to the facility, where there are individuals with special needs, 48 beds for these individuals who earn at or below 50% of the area median income. Many earn less than that, but that's the maximum. There, the county will buy the property and sell it to West Hab for a dollar and add income restrictions to the property, but there are currently income restrictions on the property from a state program, so the county's affordability will begin when the current income restrictions The request is for acquisition funds from New Homes Land Acquisition for $787,500, which is $18,750 per unit, and the population that will, the residents will earn down in the bottom-left corner, because it's a single-room occupancy, and there are studios and single-room occupancy units in the building, we're looking at the one-person household, and it's the bottom two incomes that are-
Before you change the slide, I just want to point out for everybody that as of effective April 1st, actually, the information, we found it after our last planning board meeting, but the income limits in Westchester County jumped significantly. That four-person household at 100% of AMI was 111,700, is now 117,100. So that obviously increases every single limit, so, you know, a family of four is considered affordable now at 80% of AMI. They can earn up to $93,650 to qualify for our homeownership units, a family of four. But again, so it impacted the 50% limits that Kim is specifically talking about here, where the individuals can now earn up to $41,000, and they need help when they earn $41,000.
The county is filling the gap for the acquisition cost in this, in this development. The West Hab will apply for other funding and contribute equity to the development, and the county will support this development by, by funding some of the acquisition cost. So this, this building has been in downtown Yonkers for many years. It's been through some transformations, but when West Hab purchases the building, they intend to make improvements to it that will upgrade the heating systems and make the building more energy efficient. They intend to repair the roof, and these things will help maintain and preserve affordable housing for special needs individuals in the county.
I have one question. We have a West Hab, or we had one over there in the college at one point, right?
In where?
In Westchester Community College.
It's West Help.
Oh, West Help.
That's West Help, that's not West Hab.
Okay.
Yes. That was an actual shelter over there. This is more permanent housing.
Got it.
But it is still very small, SRO-type housing.
Kim, will there be any relocation?
There's, it's not proposed right now.
Yeah, normally, we wouldn't step in until the end of the affordability period, but in this case, the estate that owns this property is looking to sell. And I don't know if any of you saw in the paper last week, but the White Plains Y is now looking to close. That's 163 SRO units that we're going to lose in this county unless we can work with them to get a developer, and we're already working with them to get a developer in there to kind of step up to the plate and see if, what we can do about preserving the buildings. But they already have 20 of those SRO units that are, they just say are uninhabitable. It's one of the reasons that they are just getting out of the business of the residential property. It's hard for the SROs to be able to maintain them. So West Hab has been leasing this building, the owners of the property, the estate, are just looking to sell it, and so West Hab really wants to be able to step in and preserve it. The county's asked, the 18,000 per unit is really, all we're buying is the land, we're not actually paying for the building. Our New Homes Land Acquisition is purchasing the land. Generally, we buy the land, and then the developer builds on it. In this case, we're buying the land, and they're going to get, they can, because there's 40 units here, they can actually afford some debt, because the rent that they get will pay.
They'll buy the building, then?
Yes, that, West Hab is gonna pay for the building. We're actually, our contribution is paying for the land.
Got it.
Correct. So we're gonna preserve these units, we'll, we'll get our whole 50-year affordability period after the existing affordability period ends. So we, you know, it's really a good situation for us to be able to preserve this smaller type of housing.
Right.
Do you know what subsidy is on for the HAP?
HHAP, right, as of right now, yeah. Yes.
So when does the existing affordability-
Kim, did you, one, one document I have shows that it ends next year, but I think it goes a couple more years after that. So we're gonna, we're gonna confirm that.
It doesn't end with the change in the ownership.
No, 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 no. There, that's not the issue.
What's gonna be the cost to the county to purchase from the current building?
The $787,000 to preserve 41?
48.
48 units.
So it's 18,000.
It's 18,000 per unit.
Now, that does say not to exceed, and it also says-
Yes, based on a subject to appraisal.
Subject to appraisal. Do we have any idea what the appraisal is gonna be?
Not, not yet, but land value in the past of what we bought in, in Yonkers has actually been probably between 18,000 and 25,000 per unit.
And there'll be a separate appraisal on just the land-
Yes.
-as if the building wasn't there?
Correct.
How, how much will the total acquisition cost to the estate be?
You had that on your chart.
Yeah.
Back to the chart. $2,762,000.
Okay, so, so it's another-
The land and the, yeah.
About another 2 million-
2 million bucks a building.
Above what the county spent.
How many units are currently occupied?
In this case, all of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Wyndham has been there for, forever.
Some commercial space on the ground floor, or?
Yes, there is. There's office space, there's security, I'm not sure about retail space.
Speak up, Kim.
I'm sorry, there's office space, and there's security in the building. I'm not sure about retail space.
There's no retail, but I think the blue door is there. It's an art gallery.
Oh, okay.
And they pay rent, they pay rent to the new owners, or would that be like a rental down there, or would they change that into apartments or homes?
Which part?
Downstairs, the retail or the, the street level?
If there is retail, then that would be part of the negotiation.
Any other questions?
This doesn't require any zoning or any planning approval or anything?
Yeah, it already exists, yeah.
Then, then we'd assume that that commercial level would probably have to stay, because that, that might trigger something otherwise.
Right.
Yeah, it's also tricky to put residential on the first floor.
I tend to not want to do that, and some zoning won't allow it anyhow.
Yeah. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the new homeland acquisition capital project funding based upon the not to exceed and subject to an appraisal?
Okay, motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next.
Okay, we're going from the city of Yonkers to the city of New Rochelle.
The county place.
The county place.
New Rochelle. And this is La Count Place Apartments, Phase 1, located at 14 La Count Place. There are four parcels that are combined to make the, the one property that, that the developer will build, a 27-story building that will include 379 residential units. 303 of those units will be market rate units, and 76 will be affordable AFFH units that are for income-eligible households that are between, up to 50 and up to 60% of the area median income. There are studios and one, one and two-bedroom units in it. This building is located across the street from New Rock City, so there's recreation, restaurants, transportation. We're in the downtown area, and there's lots of services in walking distance. The first phase is the 27-story tower that will have 379 rental units. There's also retail space on the ground floor, and there are amenities for the building that are exercise rooms and community rooms and lounges, and the, the residents of the building will even have parking. There are some parking spaces in the building, and there are spaces across the street allocated for this building in the New Rock City parking lot. The developer is requesting county funds to purchase the property, to purchase part of the property, $4,180,000, which is $55,000 per unit for the 76 affordable units, and there is also a request for infrastructure improvements, and the county will provide the funds to New Rochelle to do the infrastructure improvements. The construction will not exceed $1.35 million. This development, the county units and the county funding are part of a much larger development, as you can see. The budget is over $165 million, and this is just Phase 1, but there are more units planned.
So the tax equity, are those tax rates?
Yes.
9% or 4%?
Uh, this is going to be 4%.
So that's right.
So the, the affordable units, will they be popcorns throughout the entire building, or will they be on?
Yes, they will.
They'll be throughout the building.
Yeah, what the developer is actually doing is condo-ing the building, so there's gonna be two separate condos within the building. One is for the market rate, 303 units, and the other will be the 76 affordable units, but they will still be interspersed throughout the building.
It'll also be Studio 1 and 2 bedroom, can they be all?
Yes, it's gonna be a mix. We actually have the breakup of how many units in all, and then what the- what the breakup is for the affordable units, so it is a comparable mix.
This is that building that Capella was putting up in those six, right? The County Square School?
The Council, yeah. So, Bill Walter is partnering with Peter Murray to do this one now. So, they've shifted developers for this site.
So, it looks like, it looks like we're being asked for additional under, like, the cover legal fees?
To cover their, the city's engineering and legal fees, yes.
But so, the developer is not, not included?
Well, that, understand, infrastructure funds spun through the city. And so, this, it has to be somewhat independent of the developer to be able to do the engineering and the legal because there's, they, you know, so what we're actually going to be funding is sewer improvements because the sewer, we all know, is an issue in, in New Rochelle, exterior to the site. So, it's not even on the property. It's actually going to be down the street, go covering several blocks. I think it's like sixteen hundred feet of sewer pipe that will be going from a s- four inch line to a, or a six inch line to an eight or a ten inch line. So, it's actually going to be expanding the sewer capacity for the city. So, again, it goes to the city, but we have to provide funds to the city to cover their engineering and legal costs.
The per unit cost that you have here?
Mm-hmm.
That's per subsidized units or?
That's the per subsidized unit, but on top of that is, because there's not enough parking in the building, part of the county's contribution is to pay for parking spaces in the New Rock City parking lot.
And will that be a purchase or a continued?
No, they're actually going to purchase spaces.
Okay.
Okay, there's going to be permanent spaces that will then be of, available for free for all the affordable owners, of the affordable renters, sorry, the affordable tenants. The market rate tenants will have to pay for their parking spaces. So, there's going to be a premium price for the, for the tenants who want to buy us or pay for a space in the building. There will be a less of a price for those tenants that want to purchase this or pay the rent for a space in New Rock City.
Okay, you said something about condos?
Yes, because of the way the tax credits work, there's actually investors that will invest in tax credit developments, so they get tax credits on their own taxes going forward for the next fifteen years. So, the, the tax, sorry, for the ten years, but the, the tax, the, so, the tax credit investors need to own a structure. And so, the developer is going to condo the affordable units as one condo, so the investors have a vested interest in a property. All right, and then the condo, the market rate.
Everything's rental, but there's two condo, one for market, one for subsidized.
Correct, exactly.
If it's just a single tower, right?
It's a single tower, and so, you, you, you're not going to see physical barriers between these two condos. It's just the condos are going to lay out X, you know, X unit, three oh three, three oh four, three oh six, four oh six, whatever it is, are all in this condo and the other units are all in the other condo.
So, they'll be owned by the investors and then they'll be rental units.
Yes, exactly.
That's what confused me, condos.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it'll be like an Avalon, but only in?
Yeah, one of the things you should know about this development is that the city of New Rochelle is one of the cities that has a ordinance that requires that ten percent of the units be affordable. But their ten percent of affordability is eighty percent of AMI. So, we're actually buying down the affordability of these rental units, not to eighty percent. We're buying more units because we're going from ten percent to twenty percent, but we're buying down the affordability to fifty and sixty percent rather than leaving the affordability at eighty percent. So, we're actually going to get more affordable households to be able to live right across the street from New Rock City. They'll be able to work there. They'll be able to, you know, have lots of opportunity with all the transportation and all the employment opportunities in the city.
That parking garage is owned by the city, isn't it? I think the deal structure when they first did it was that the, the city built the parking.
I think it flows back.
Yes, they are making a payment. The parking is to the city.
Yeah.
So, that is, and they're also, the way that the city's zoning works, with so many square footage of lot area, they're allowed to go high, you know, higher, so they're allowed extra floors, but then they also have to pay for extra floors. So, that's how they're getting up to the twenty-seven stories. But this is, these three hundred and seventy-nine units were part of the thirteen hundred units that got approved last week. So, this just got its site plan approval. It has its site plan approval. We actually have the appraisal, so we already have the, the justification that the fifty-five thousand dollars per unit actually works, you know, is the value of the land, even though the developer's costs all in for the, for the affordable units ends up being actually closer to like fifty-eight thousand per unit with all his approvals and everything else.
What was there where they're building this? What's on the site now?
There's a couple buildings there.
Yeah, there are now.
A couple of buildings that are.
They've got to be demolished.
Yes.
I think there're like some retail, small retail buildings.
Are they maintaining retail on the ground floor?
There is going to be some retail and that's, again, that's why we're not paying for all of the spa, all of the land. We're only paying for a portion of it. This development, this Phase One, Kim mentioned there's a Phase Two. Phase Two is, at the end of the day, this development's going to be a total of five hundred and eleven units. So, there's a second tower that will be built. There is another affordable component to that. Ten percent of the units in, of the hundred and thirty-two units, I think, in the second building also have to be affordable. But in this case, the developer said this building's not actually going to get built for a couple more years, and he's actually hoping that the condo market will pick up and that these, this second tower will be able to be homeownership. And then the affordable units there will be affordable homeownership. So, we're, our funds are not contributing toward this second phase because it's not actually going to get built for a number of years. But again, it was included in the site plan approval that he received last week.
Can you show the site plan again so we can see where the other?
Yes. This is the first tower, the twenty-seven story building that we're discussing now. And...
So, the yellow, which one is the?
So, the yellow is the, the second phase.
Yeah, the pink is the site that we're discussing now.
The L shape.
Off to the right, off, kind of up diagonally is New Rock City. It is literally right across the city.
Right across the street, yeah.
Yeah, right across the street.
I think you own post office, um, area, is that, did you tell them that?
What about all the additional traffic with all the units that are all going to have at least one car? And I know that the topics come up numerous times at our meetings about traffic issues in New Rochelle and the flow of traffic and where the one-way streets are, roads. What type of?
This, this, as you may remember, the city did a comprehensive plan update in the last couple of years, and so, they're comfortable that this is going to work.
They're changing the whole traffic pattern in New Rochelle.
Right, that's what we were discussing. That, I want to know how this kind of worked in with what they were planning to do about the traffic flow because it was a major concern.
It's interesting. We didn't get a referral on this one, did we?
I don't believe we did.
No. That's normally when that would all get discussed is before they did site plan approval, we usually get to comment on it. And we didn't get to comment on this one.
I mean, we did, wait, the GEIS and the comprehensive, GEIS for downtown development, that was referred. So, that was where the traffic and all that stuff got analyzed at that point. But the site plan review, I would have to check the records. I, my, I don't recall it, but it could still be the, the site plan review. Because it was, ha, after the EIS was done, it still needed a site plan approval from the city's planning board, which would be a referable, would be a referable action.
But there was a traffic assessment and there are going to be changes made because of the, uh, you know, number of developments in New Rochelle. So, I know particularly in that, um, you know, in the business area, there's going to be major changes to the traffic.
If anybody was at the Affordable Housing Conference at PACE last Thursday, the Commissioner of Development in the city was one of the speakers, and he was actually very, very happy promoting that you can get site plan approval from start to finish in ninety days in the city of New Rochelle. So, this was, exactly, this was one of the developments that he was speaking about.
And I think they're also adding bike sharing in New Rochelle.
Yeah, they actually have a, a bike sharing program. Naomi may even touch on that in.
I have a few comments beforehand. I do want to say that I have done work for Wilder Walter in the past, but not on this project and not on any project in New Rochelle for them. So, my first question is, the total acquisition cost is fourteen million plus.
Yes.
Twenty percent of the units are going to be affordable. So, why is the county new homeland acquisition not twenty percent of the fourteen million, five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars?
Okay, the fourteen million, five hundred thousand relates specifically to the actual purchase of the land. All right, when we look at our developments, when we look at the financing, understand that the county's role is to fill the gap. And so, the developer was able to show us that in addition to the actual purchase of land, which he already owns, that the approval cost associated with getting all of his approvals and the parking spaces and everything else that he needs, that he, his actual expenses are at the fifty-eight thousand per unit for the affordable. And so, the, one of the things that we did look at, and we actually were studying this last night as well, Kim and I were here, the developer, one of the biggest gaps that we're seeing, you'll all know that in the last year, the tax codes have changed, and so, tax credit revenue has shrunk. Where before developers were getting a dollar fourteen, a dollar fifteen per dollar of tax credit, now tax credits are less desirable because of the fact that the taxes on businesses are, have been lowered. And so, they're projecting an, an actual tax credit, I think it was like ninety-six or ninety-seven cents.
Ninety-seven.
So, they've got to make up that extra seventeen cents on the dollar. So, they were able to show us, again, we'll, we'll continue, it's a not to exceed amount, so we're going to continue to work with the developer as we get through the board legislators. But they are showing us that there is a gap and that there are reasonable acquisition expenses associated.
I'm not saying there's not a gap that needs to be made up. I'm just saying that the acquisition cost is usually means that's the value of the property.
Yep.
So, you know, I assume an appraisal just, justified that.
Yes.
So, then the question is, why are we paying an extra?
At the end of the day, for the total five hundred and eleven unit development, his acquisition cost is over twenty million dollars. So, the, you know, there is definitely, the cost is there, but there's demolition costs, there, there are other costs associated with actually getting this to the development.
My next question is regarding parking. I think it's very nice that the affordable units will not have to pay for parking.
Yes.
But apparently, they're also not going to be allowed to park within the structure. Their affordable units are going to have to park across the street. Did anything about that come up at the planning board or the town board, ville, uh, city council regarding this seems to be, uh?
So, let me answer your question. You have to pay to park in the building, correct?
The parking spaces in the building are premium spaces.
So, if I had an affordable unit and wanted to pay for a spot, I could have a spot in the building?
Correct, but you have to pay for it.
Is, is that the case?
Yes.
In affordable?
That's what the developer told us last night. We checked in with him yesterday.
So, you, the affordable can pay for a spot in the building?
Yes.
Do you know how many total parking spaces there are in the two?
It's one for one, so it's three hundred and seventy-nine units between the building and across the street.
And do you know how many are in the building itself?
Two oh nine, I want to say.
So, a hundred and seventy across the street?
Yeah.
And since the affordable will be a fifty-year restriction, are the fif, are the units in the parking structure also for fifty years?
Yes. We confirmed that last night.
To that point, the amenities are just being made up.
Yes. No, no, the amenities are all available for all the tenants.
Regarding the referral, isn't Main Street a state road?
Main Street's a former county road.
Former, so it's not a state or county road currently?
Well, we, we gave the roads back to the city a while ago, but the county planning board maintains jurisdiction as if they were still county roads, even though they're not.
So, why would it have not come before this board as a referral?
I haven't double-checked the referral records. It could have come in a couple of years ago, but I don't have a recollection of it, but that doesn't mean that it's not in the files.
Let's double-check.
One of the big issues for New Rochelle was the sewer plant, the county sewer. And we've had discussions about, and this is more for Hugh, I guess, but the plant's capacity and it desires somehow to expand the capacity or to charge so that you get the funds available. I think we were actually talking about expanding the Mount Vernon plant. Have we, aside improving the flow to the plant through the placement of the main, what, what are we looking at? Just overall capacity of the sewer plant to handle the additional sewage?
It's actually the Environmental Facilities Commissioner, who's, didn't join us this morning. So, yes, when we were doing a review of the comprehensive plan, that is one of the things that the planning board commented on with very, with great concern. And so, we did encourage the city to really step up with its eye and eye. And so, I think the developer and the city have determined that by actually replacing this pipe, they're actually going to be able to eliminate any illegal connections to this pipe and then also make sure that there's any leakage or anything like that along the way or anybody coming into the system, that they're going to be able to eliminate it for this sixteen hundred foot stretch of pipe that they're going to be replacing.
Uh, just out of curiosity, do they have a first mortgage? I'm curious who's lending money out for housing nowadays.
Are you, is CPC involved in this one?
No.
Okay. Uh, well, I'm, we'd have to look specifically at the financing. I don't think we focused on who was doing the lending.
Just curious. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious about, it seems to be a very small piece of land that this very tall building is being built on. Is that, did that require a zoning change or is that in conformity with the rest of the building?
It's in, it's in conformity. Again, part of the, the ability to build extra stor, stories goes with the size of the lot.
Right, and also what the area is like.
So, that's, that's why this is a compilation right now of five lots or four lots? Four lots. Four lots, and then to do the extra development, the space two is another three lots that they had to add.
It's still a very small lot.
Yep.
You know, I wonder about the parking at New Rock because I know it's heavily used. And, and I was just trying to imagine where another hundred, over a hundred parking spaces.
Are going to be set aside?
Yes, because parking already is very difficult. It's not, you know, if you're going to the movies or it's, you know, it's, it's not easy to find a parking space. So, to think that a hundred and thirty spaces, I think, for the size.
Hundred and seventy spaces are going to be set aside, yes. So, we can check into that.
Yeah, I think that's important. And Fort Chester is having the same issue with the development downtown where they're going to use the garage across the street, but they did counts in the garage.
Yeah.
And they were able to justify the fact that there were spaces available. It sounds like the New Rock garage may be.
Well, I believe New Rock, when they built it, got nine hundred spots, I believe, when they built the facility. But I just can't imagine they're going to give them prime location off of the, it's a top, nine hundred and ten floor.
But what in New Rochelle have to have this all fleshed out before they, all these laws?
Yeah, it's just a matter of, they've got site plan approval. We got this literally last Monday, so, Kim and I are, I appreciate you raising certain issues. We will look into this further. We're, we still have to get to the board legislators. So, any issues that you raise will flesh out between now and when we get to the board.
And come back to us at the next meeting, if there are any adjustments. Any other questions on this matter?
But again, that's why we write things with not to exceed amounts, so that if there is any negotiation, we get it down.
So, I just do have a question. The parking requirement is one spot per unit. Does it matter the size of the unit?
Correct.
I'm sure some people don't use a car and some people use a train, so they're not everybody will have.
But if you have a two-bedroom, you're still only going to get one spot.
Yes.
Do you have the option of purchasing more than one spot if available, if other units decline to take advantage of the spot offer?
I'm sure you do because the developer's going to maximize his parking revenue.
Yeah.
So, he's not going to want spaces to go unused. And the fact that, you know, some of these are going to be studios as well, you, you're going to have people that may not have any interest whatsoever in having a car.
And is there's any accommodation for guest parking? Like, do any of these people?
Well, again, you've got the parking, you've got the parking lot across the street anyway, so.
Which is attached to.
But they would be, probably their guests would be paying for the parking.
Right.
Could you also look into the connection between the parking, external parking and the building itself to see if there's a clear path from the parking lot?
Yeah, so what floors and access connection?
Now, the county will continue to monitor the affordable units for fifty years?
Yes.
So, make sure you monitor the parking as well. Because, I mean, fifty years is a long time for people to remember, oh, yeah, those spaces were supposed to be for the people across the street.
Correct. But again, we filed deed restrictions on our property and we actually have an intermunicipal developer agreement with the city. So, we tie the city into the affordability requirement and, you know, by providing infrastructure funding to the city, we tie them into it. So, yes, we will protect our interests with the deed restriction, not just, you know, of an agreement that, you know, the city will make the unit available to us.
Any other questions?
Since it's a tax credit deal, it's enhanced monitoring, too. They look at all of this.
Right. The IRS is watching this one, not just us.
Yeah, but they're not going to look at the parking spaces.
Right.
Okay, if I can have a motion to approve the new homeland acquisition and housing implementation fund allocations with not to exceed- Fund allocations with not-to-exceed amounts for this development in Rochelle.
A motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm recusing.
Hmm? Okay.
Hey, Mike is recusing.
We have one recusal? Okay, thank you, Kim. Okay, now disposition of county property on Halsted Avenue in Harrison, I guess Anthony's going to talk to us about that? And we have one recusal?
Yes, sir.
Andrea, Andrea's recusing, so...
Good morning, everybody. Okay, let's get right into the, right into the meat of this. Okay, Halsted Avenue, formerly county road, Harrison Avenue, it's the MTA parking lot. Avalon has posed development of this parcel, and are requesting that we provide the shoulder, or what the traveled, non-traveled lane of the county road, it's eleven feet wide by the distance, I think it's sixteen hundred, no, sorry, right there, one thousand one, one thousand fifteen point nine feet. By doing so, we will allow the developer to adjust the curb alignment. This is, so I'm going, going north to Rye, towards Rye on Halsted Avenue, and then it ends over by the intersection, before the intersection of Macy. So, they're looking for us to forgive our ownership, it's been a mystery of who owns this strip of land, the county, the, the MTA owns up to that line, all right? Now, the county owns the road, but the full, oh, I lost my pointer here, here we go, I need a new battery. So, there's this sliver of no man's land that we don't think we own, town of Rye, the town of Harrison doesn't think they own, but in order for this deal to close, we have to do a quick...
The title companies have been into the county clerk's office, and their determination is inconclusive. They have not been able to find any deeds that speaks to the ownership of this property. So, again, we don't think we own it, the town doesn't think they own it, but with what the developer is asking, if we, if we can approve, and this is all subject to the board legislators, a quick claim deed, we give up any rights that we would have, if in fact we owned it. The only concern that we really had related to the, a bus stop, county bus stop along the route here, you're going to cover that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, the county's going to give this property to, to the town.
Yeah.
Now, some of the land will be utilized, this red shows you actually the building encroaching on that eleven-foot piece of land, okay? In some areas, it's quite significant. But after we get to, now, now we're looking at a deep, the, the biggest issue here was there's an existing parking, excuse me, an existing bus stop that was at the corner of Harrison Avenue and Halsted, and the road there is very wide, actually, let me go back, I'm going to look at the area for one second, okay. So, if you look at this, our property line, you see that yellow line? That's the, that's the limit of Metro North property. Now, the, the road itself is very wide, there's parking, there's a bus stop, our bus stop currently is right here, quite inactive, you, right next to the train station, DOT Transportation looked at this, there is, it's quite inactive, there's a stacking, I think it's at a hundred and, I mean, so it's...
A hundred people actually get off, get on and off at one point in the day.
So, Kevin Roseman was very concerned about the safety of leaving this spot where it is, so this has been discussed, I want to say at great length almost, it was quite, quite, quite the discussion. So, now they're moving the, now they're providing a better location for the bus to pull off and away from the travel lane, allow cars to still go by, they've eliminated all the angle parking, okay? It's all now gone, where, because it was all, it was all being used by commuter traffic anyway. I said, I wonder where all these people are going to park now, but I said, not my issue.
Well, they're building a parking strip, that's what I was...
Well, that's hourly parking, right there.
It's hourly?
Yeah, the commuter parking.
But we're not, this is, this was enough torture to go through, so now, so this, this become, here's our, here is the mystery ownership land, there's the eleven feet, right? So, they are constructing additional public sidewalk in what is, you know, beyond this line, so there's, there is room for people to walk. Kevin was concerned that we, while we're, we are going to be, I guess, we'll be giving away our rights to that eleven feet, we're looking to only give them the amount of land where the building is going to be, to the limits, so that the public right-of-way still will be ample, give you an ample enough room for people to walk. There is, there is plenty of room along there, but, okay, so this is just showing you a little bit about that intersection, now, it's a little, this was one of Kevin Roseman's, so he's, not only we're looking at parking, I mean, the bus stop area, he's relocating crosswalks, so that you get the people safe across the street. This is, this is now the graphic showing you of the actual, now, the limits of the , so you have the building, while it was encroaching on that eleven feet, it still gives you about ten feet, seven feet, so it, there is still public sidewalk, here's, you know, so it's not like they're building out into the street. Now, we have continuous travel lanes, they have eliminated the parking, but there is ample room for pedestrian flow along that, and this is just going back, you know, we're going further north back towards Rye, and that's I-Rock. Okay, so, there, so we're, so, let's just back up to this, to these, to these red ones and blue ones. So, what we're looking to do is, Norma said it, quick?
Quick claim deed.
Deed, to the, give our rights, which we don't think we own anyway.
Right.
To the town, village of Harrison, and then they're going to work out the details of potentially just giving them the only, you see, well, actually, the one with the red is better, you see that red? That's where they're building, they need to own that land. How Harrison allowed them to build a building on land that's mystery ownership is for a discussion for another day, but we're looking to, we're going to transfer this ownership, but the, that eleven feet is going to be modified upon further discussions to just give them the land they need for the building, and that one area, it's quite a bit, but this is not showing you the full streetscape, there is public space in front. So, we're here before you, so we can get to the next step and work out the details further, and giving our rights to the town of Harrison, which then will work with the developer to secure their property so they can move forward on this project. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
How tall are the buildings, I mean, how many stories are they avalanche?
I don't know.
It was trouble enough to deal with the ground, yeah.
I guess around five, six stories, that range, yeah. If you've seen that traffic, you know, I'm sure they did studies, but the, that traffic in that, behind there, the train station, Town Hall, and Calvert Street, that whole area is just insane, heavily trafficked.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, don't go.
Get away on Tuesdays and Thursdays when there's court, it's awful, the parking is horrible, it's awful.
And that part, parking, will not be improved or affected by this project, because the parking for the court and the town...
That's behind Town Hall.
Correct.
Right.
Well, for the, for the employees is behind Town Hall, otherwise it's street parking, there is no really good parking in any of the recent past for people who come on traffic and court days.
Right, because the houses on Calvert don't have driveways or, you know, eastwards, they park behind where everybody else parks for court and everything else.
This development was approved, reviewed by the town of Harrison, I guess, MTA did a RFP, dates back number of years.
Yeah, it does.
But please, I encourage you to attend a town meeting, and please voice your concerns about traffic.
It's crazy in that area.
I have, I have a comment, but again, I just want to announce, I've done work for Avalon in the town of Greenberg, but I have not done any work on this particular project in Harrison. Did this come before the planning board? Did this plan come before the planning board?
Yes.
And what was the recommendation, if you can recall?
Oh geez, it was many, many years ago. Basically, MTA was more or less the developer with this, for a while, we thought it would not be jurisdictional because MTA was leading it. Eventually, the town, village was able to, site plan approval over the project, that was a number of years ago. So, with the traffic, we referred it to the Department of Public Works and Transportation due to the fact that it was county road, and we used their comments in the letter. But I don't recall those comments exactly. I do know that the same person who was working with this was the same person who made those comments, Wayback Glenn.
You mean the same county person?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Kevin, well, he's the traffic engineer.
Yeah, so, I mean, he was reviewing it every step of the way, and they needed permits from the county under section two thirty-nine F of the county, of general municipal law, which is a permit, they need curb cut permits, and then they needed an approval for the bus stop, so this has gotten an extra level of review from that department.
In our legislation, the attorney has already been directed that the legislation will, the board, if they desire to approve it, anything is going to be subject to the commissioner of DPW and Transportation, so that we can be sure that the county's traffic engineer is, is protecting the county's interest as it relates to the bus stops.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, the traffic that I was referring to, it occurs on the other side of the tracks.
The other side of the tracks, right.
Has nothing to do with the traffic along Halsted Avenue, which, for the most part during the day, based on experience, is relatively light, and it's a very small business district there. And one of the purposes, and one of the attractive qualities of this project was enhancing the downtown business district of Harrison with this particular development.
Do we know what they're going to do with commuter parking during construction?
I can tell you that there's many parking agreements, one, and there's an interim parking agreement, which requires the town of Harrison to, to provide certain number of parking spaces, which will be, as of right now, up the street and across, there was an area that was, I think, referred to originally as Project Homeline, it was a big field that was going to be converted into fields, and, correct, it's a grassy area, and it'll be appropriately gravelled, there's a whole agreement as to how it's going to be constructed, and, and how many spaces will be provided there.
Any other comments? Just one, I guess we can't charge for our land since we don't really know we own it.
Exactly.
I think we're getting a dollar.
It is, maybe you don't want the dollar even since we don't know.
Well, who's been retaining it? Probably the town.
Harrison probably.
Yeah.
Right, they would be the sidewalks, we'd be the roadways. That, that's not unusual, there's not really deeds to roadways, it's the absence of ownership gives us the right-of-way, but in most cases.
Can I have a motion for the disposition of this fancy, phantom county property?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One recusal?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, you have the, Andrea's recused, okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, Naomi, you're going to...
Right, while our, our action items are done, I know a couple of you had to leave, so, all right?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for inviting me to present today. I'm going to give a background about...
Why don't you turn the microphone towards you?
Yeah. I'm the planning director for the Transportation Division of the Department of Public Works in Transportation, and I'm going to give an overview of our bus system and some of the activities of our transportation department.
Yeah, it's not quite fitting this screen.
Yeah, you're not filling the screen.
Okay, great.
There we go.
Everybody can see now, okay, so...
Phil, can you just get the light?
Carl's saying, if we can show it, is this okay? So far, I think it's pretty viewable. Thanks.
So, the mission of our department is to facilitate the efficient and economical movement of people through a balanced and environment, environmentally sensitive transportation system. I just want to give a little bit of background to explain how the B-line system came about. Prior to the, to the B-line system, in the fifties, the sixties, there were a lot of private bus companies operating throughout Westchester, and as car ownerships increased gradually, it became less and less feasible for them to stay in business. So, in nineteen seventy, the Westchester Transit Department was formed, and consolidating all the routes allowed the system to qualify for state and federal funding, and it allowed us to coordinate all our maps and fares and public information. We're a public-private partnership, so the assets, the buses and the garages are county-owned, and we contract with a private operator to operate the system. In nineteen eighty-seven was when the branding of the B-line came about. Having trouble here, it's not, oh. How should I, oh, wait a minute, okay, okay, got it, thanks. So, we're a, a mid, considered a mid-sized bus system nationwide, we're in about the top third of systems. We have three hundred and twenty-five buses, and there's a range in our fleet of the size of the buses, so you've probably seen the sixty-foot articulated buses, those are the largest, and then we have forty-foot and thirty-foot buses, and we deploy them based on the market and the type of terrain that they're going to be operating in. We have over fifty-nine routes, and there's a range of routes, we have local buses, express buses, and feeder services to train stations and to corporate parks. We're also really a very regional system, all of the subway lines that terminate in the Bronx are all met by a B-line bus, and we have very significant ridership between New York City and our system. About a third of our riders transfer to an MTA bus, subway, or commuter rail line. Our, our system also has about thirty-three hundred stops and three hundred, and over three hundred shelters, and in twenty seventeen, we carried about twenty-eight point six million riders, which is about a hundred thousand a day. Here you can see a map of the B-line system. On the right, you see the southern portion of the county with a lot of routes, because as you know, the key to having viable transit is population density, and in the southern part of the county, we have the cities of Yonkers, Mount Vernon, New Rochelle, White Plains, so that affords us the opportunity to provide a lot of service. On the left is the northern part of the county, above I-287, we do have some coverage there, it's just not as extensive. In two thousand and seven, we started accepting MetroCard, and that was a real boon to our system, because it allowed free transfers between B-line buses, and more importantly, between B-line and MTA buses and subways. And very, just last year, the MTA signed a contract for the next generation of fare payment technology, and we're working with them to deploy that on our buses, we're considered one of the affiliate agencies of the MTA, so it would probably be in about the twenty-twenty-one timeframe that you'll see the new fare technology on our buses, it'll be a smart card type of technology. We have a, what's known as our Smart Commute Program, which is known as Transportation Demand Management, where we do a lot of outreach to businesses and employers, we work with something called Five One, New York Five One One Ride Share, which is run by New York State Department of Transportation. We have, we do some marketing and promotions, encouraging people to ride the bus system, and a very important part of our outreach is the BEAT program, Be Educated About Transit. We have a senior BEAT program where we do a lot of outreach to senior centers, where we encourage people to sign up for reduced fare MetroCards, and we find that this program is really very important, certainly as we have an aging population, and people can no longer drive, this is a way for people to maintain their independence if they can take the bus system, and certainly, it, we would rather have them on the fixed route buses than taking the paratransit system. We also have a school BEAT program where we reach out to schoolchildren, and a BEAT Plus program, which is for the disabled. A large part of our operation deals with just management and oversight of the system, we have a capital program, and a good part of that is maintaining assets at our garages and keeping our fleet and estate a good repair. One major initiative now is we're going, we're replacing our fleet of articulated buses with hybrid electric buses, we have seventy-eight of those types, and we'll start seeing them coming in later this year. We obtain funding from a variety of federal and state sources, and we oversee grants. We also deal with all our stops and shelters, and we have an advertising program on our shelters and on our buses, and we share the revenues from the shelter advertising with the municipalities. And we also have extensive public information on our website, our, we have to deal with our timetables, the ride guides, that's what's at the bus stops, and information on the buses, and our website gives a lot of information, if you are interested, I'm going to talk about some of our studies, and those are, are available on the website. And as I mentioned, we have a paratransit system, federal regulations require us to provide paratransit... a paratransit system. Federal regulations require us to provide paratransit within three-quarters of a mile of the fixed route service, and that system has 99 vehicles and 6,700 subscribers. There's an actual application process that people have to go through to qualify for that service. They have to show that they can't take the fixed route system. And that carries about 1,100 to 1,300 a day. In 2012, we started a program where we allow, called Parataxi, where people have the option of taking a taxi if they're ambulatory. That has reduced the per-trip cost of the paratransit service. And now I wanna touch on some of the planning initiatives. We're a member, Westchester County is a voting member of the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council, which is the metropolitan planning organization for the New York metropolitan region. It's the federally designated entity for transportation planning. And it's really through this process of working with NIMTC that we oversee the process for bringing the federal money to the region. The other members of NIMTC are Nassau and Suffolk County on Long Island, the other Hudson Valley Counties of Rockland and Putnam, the five boroughs of New York City, New York State Department of Transportation, and the MTA. So, we participate in that process, dealing with the funding, and we, there are also several federally required planning products that we have to deal with, that we work with the NIMTC staff and the members on various committees. So, there's a Regional Transportation Plan that has a Horizon Year of at least 20 years, and has to be updated every four years. That has to have a freight element, a bicycle and pedestrian component, a safety element. And in this process too, we work with our colleagues here in the Planning Division, and we pull them in on areas that are certainly relevant. There's a land use component of that plan. We have a Transportation Improvement Program, which is our five-year capital program, and what's known as the Unified Planning Work Program, which is a one-year program of studies. And we also participate in the requirement for air quality determination. There's a whole modeling process that we have to go through with the other NIMTC members to ensure that we're complying with the Clean Air Acts. Now, I wanna just touch on some of the planning studies that we've done in our, in the Department of Transportation. We recently undertook a study of two major east-west B-line routes, because east-west travel has always been very challenging in the county. And there are the Route 7 and 13. The Route 13 starts up in Austin and goes to Tarrytown, then White Plains, all the way to Portchester and Rye. And then the Route 7, which is what this map shows, starts in Yonkers, goes to Mount Vernon, and then New Rochelle. And we found that the routes were just slowed down by so many, many, many bus stops, lots of turning movements, lots of traffic lights. We were just looking at ways, we had a consultant to find ways to make them work better and make them more efficient. So, this is just a basic concept that you see here. We looked at the idea of bus stop, bus stop balancing, which deals with looking at bus stop spacing, opportunities to relocate stops, where stops might be way too close together, where can we take out stops or move them. And we implemented it on the Route 7 last year, and now we're starting on the Route 13. Another study that we've, that's, we're undertaking right now, is dealing with the Bronx to Getty Square. This is a major corridor. There's about 17,000 riders, B-line riders in this corridor, and the routes connect with the subway there. And there's just, you're looking at the trunk line of the route, but then when the buses get to Getty Square, there's all these different branches. Some go to Tarrytown, White Plains, Hastings. So, again, we're looking at different opportunities there. There's about 145 buses. Our buses meeting the subway southbound in the morning, and then another 145 going northbound. So, you've got a very, very extensive amount of service there. Another initiative, in 2016, we implemented Transit Signal Priority in the Central Avenue Corridor. And what that does, it gives buses a time advantage at lights. So, what you're looking at in the photo on the left shows a bus approaching southbound, the intersection at the Yonkers Raceway, where it had, that's known as a Q jump, where it has its own lane there, and it'll get its own signal before the rest of the traffic. It's like a white bar that's just for the bus driver, and that will allow the bus just to get ahead of the rest of the traffic and merge into the far-sided lane to avoid the congestion and just give the bus a little bit of a time advantage. And then at other intersections, the signals are adjusted so that the bus comes and it can get, it can get an early green or an extended green. And this was part of a whole, this initiative came out of a Bus Rapid Transit Study that we did for the corridor, that we completed around 2009, and this was the first element of implementation. And then finally, I wanna talk about a study that we very recently completed, looking at first and mile, first and last mile connections and the role of transportation network companies in addressing them, and just looking at generally what the role of these TNCs should be as part of the whole transportation network. So, we looked at case studies around the country. We looked at the different challenges that are associated with TNCs, and the idea was to come up with opportunities where TNCs could be used to complement or existing transit, not compete with it, improve mobility, and serve markets that are challenging for fixed route service. So, I'm just gonna go into this study just a little bit more. People are probably familiar with what TNCs are, but one of the reasons they're so appealing is that they're customized and flexible. It's an on-demand service. You can just access them through an app. You pay through the app. It's very seamless. You can even leave a tip. There are some shared ride options. And the whole issue is just very timely right now because legislation passed last year allowed these companies to operate anywhere in New York State. And the one you've heard about the most is Uber. Uber carries about 75% of all TNC trips. Lyft is after that, and their market share is growing. And then Uber Pool and Lyft Line, those are variations that allow shared rides. But there are definitely many challenges associated with these TNCs that we would wanna overcome if this was ever something to pursue here, because we really wanna make sure that it was done in the appropriate way. And one certainly is the Americans with Disabilities Act. Lyft, you might have heard, it was recently sued in San Francisco because they did not have accessible vehicles. So, that is an issue. There's the issue of equity, where not everybody has a smartphone, and although the, so you'd wanna have call-in option available. And studies also show that the users of these services have higher incomes than those that don't. And although the trips are generally cheaper than a regular taxicab, they can be more expensive than just a regular transit trip. There are also labor union issues. The drivers are not unionized. They're considered independent contractors. It's very important to consider the type of operating arrangement that you would have because you wanna make sure that you're still serving the public interest. You wanna really spell out what the obligations are of the operator. Another issue has to do with data. A lot of these companies consider their data as proprietary, and if you wanna plan and monitor and see how you're doing, you'd wanna make sure you'd have access to the data. And then you wanna make sure to minimize negative externalities. So, studies have shown, there was one in New York City that was done, that there has been a direct link in, an increase in traffic with TNCs. So, that's where the shared ride option is definitely more appealing. And just last year, the University of California, Davis, did a study, and they found that there was about a 6% decline in transit ridership because of these services. So, again, you wanna make sure you're really designing these things appropriately. We wouldn't want to siphon off our transit riders. And then finally, these are some of the types of case studies that we looked at around the country. One was connections to train stations and bus stops, and one, one of the earlier ones was in Summit, New Jersey, where the municipality contracted with Uber. They changed that over to Lyft now, but they didn't wanna have to keep expanding parking at the train station. And so, for the price of a parking permit, you were allowed to take a certain number of trips to the station each month. And another one was in Philadelphia. The transit system there had a contract with a TNC to provide service to different train stations. We also looked at the replacing underutilized fixed route service, off-peak job access, technology platforms. Austin, Texas did that, where they replaced an underutilized route using a geo-fencing type of technology, so that it was only available in a certain geographic area. We also looked at market expansion. An example there was Kansas City, Missouri, and then Boston, Massachusetts was using these for paratransit. And then we also participate in regional programs and studies, and this is another area where we work closely with our colleagues here in the Planning Division. We've been involved in the Tappan Zee Bridge, the I-287 Lower Hudson Transit Link Study, and now the implementation is going on, so we're closely involved in that. And a few examples are this 119 Complete Streets Study that we've been involved in. There are definitely a lot of issues that impact our buses there. A Millwood-Austin-and-Go Study, looking at bicycle and pedestrian initiatives, and lots of municipal and state initiatives. And we work closely also with planning. They mentioned it earlier, when they review comprehensive plans and development projects, they coordinate with us on, you know, the transportation impacts. And now I just wanna end with a few slides on who's actually riding the B-line. Every three years, we do a comprehensive passenger survey onboard with a sample of about 10,000 surveys, and we compare the results of that to the previous three years. So, the last time we did the survey was in 2016. We'll do it again next year. And basically, based on how people respond to the question regarding trip purpose, we see that the B-line is a real economic engine for the county, because it's taking people to jobs and taking people to school, where presumably they would be training for a job or career. This is interesting that our ridership is predominantly female, and that is fairly consistent with other bus systems, although it's a little bit more skewed. We are even a little bit more skewed than other systems. And our ethnicity is heavily minority, African-American and Hispanic. And then the age of our riders tends to vary. You could see by this, though, that the older population is going up, and that has to do with the aging of the population. And we think also some of our success in outreach to seniors. And our riders are also predominantly low-income. You can see a good portion of them earn less than $50,000 a year. There, many of them are transit-dependent, meaning they cannot afford a vehicle, and they, or they don't have one for use. And then, just to end, overall, our riders are fairly satisfied with the service on a rating of one to five, five being the best. We get very few giving it a one or a two, and most of them are giving it a four or a five. So, that'll end.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a couple. Do you indicate, oh, I'm sorry.
If I have a question, I just wanna say that I appreciate seeing this. It was really, I think, well done. Very informative.
Thank you.
You indicated the average is 100,000 a day. Since most people probably take two trips back and forth, is that 50,000 people twice, or 100,000 people twice?
You could generally say that it's, that's the total number of people that ride. So, we have found, though, not everybody is making a round trip. We've looked at data where we see that, say, the northbound and the southbound are quite imbalanced. But you could make the generalization that if everybody's riding twice, it's 50,000 people.
And that slide in Yonkers by Yonkers Raceway, obviously, the signalization is a big issue, and that's in Yonkers. Who is responsible for that signal, and I guess you have to work with Yonkers in terms of getting that done?
Yes. It was a, it was a complicated effort. There were basically five jurisdictions we had to deal with in putting this in place, because there were the city of, the city of Yonkers, the town of Greenberg, the city of White Plains, and then New York State D O T has jurisdiction for some of the roadways. So, we, we had to have intermunicipal agreements with them to implement that. So, it definitely was complicated, but they're on board with it, and it took a while because of that.
And lastly, I think, as we saw regarding the Halsted Avenue and Harrison, how it's important that the county work with development so that bus stops and things like that are optimized. I know we had one at the last meeting on Route 9 regarding a bus stop location and no sidewalk. And, I mean, those are the kinds of things, I think, it's important that comes both to our board and to the local boards to, you know, optimize the county system.
Yes. And we have a document, we're actually updating it now. It's called Bus Stop Planning and Design Guidelines for Municipalities. But, again, we can encourage municipalities, we can work with them and work with developers, but then in the end, we're advisory. But we do, to the extent possible, try to encourage developers, municipalities, to incorporate these elements into designs early on in order to accommodate our riders.
Anything else?
Well, just a matter of curiosity. I'm curious about the buses and the bus sizes, because I know the route very well from the city train station north. Definitely needs those, you know, flexible buses and stuff. But I see an awful lot of other ones with three or four people in it, and you've got a 30-foot bus. And I'm just wondering if it isn't more economical to have some smaller buses and, you know, at least you consume less gas.
Uh huh, uh huh. I mean, it's, it's something we've been, we've looked into. The other thing is, once you start getting lots of different types of buses, it gets more complicated how you deploy the vehicles. But it is definitely something that we've, you know, that we've thought about. So, and there can be variations on one, from one day to the next, as far as the riders on any given route.
I do have a question under common. Sorry. Over the past several years, obviously, this commission, this committee has been dealing a lot with the building of affordable housing and the appropriate locations for that affordable housing. And representing Northern Westchester, there's a lack of public transportation. And based on the information and statistics and the, that you've provided, it's apparent that those people that would otherwise qualify for the affordable housing being promoted by the county do not have that available to them in Northern Westchester. And there's been a big push, and mostly as a result of the Affordable Housing Settlement, to build such developments in Northern Westchester, where the only form of public transportation is the train and not necessarily always affordable. So, what, if any, research, investigation, or efforts have been made with regard to providing public transportation to places such as North Salem, where they have Bridalside, or where they're trying now to develop a project in Golden's Bridge, and Mount Kisco, and Bedford, Solmers as well?
Well, as I said earlier, you know, the key to viable transit is really having the density. So, we do have some service up there in the northern part of the county. You know, we don't have a lot. And, you know, this research that we were doing, that, you know, maybe, maybe some of these alternatives might work for some of these developments, where they could manage things like contracts with other types of service providers or different transportation network companies, because it is very challenging for us to start service up in these places where you don't have the density. But, but that said, we do work with individual communities on a case-by-case basis if there is, if there is a need. And so, it is, it is always something that, that, that we're cognizant of and that we're aware of. But again, we feel we really mostly need to invest our resources where we have the greatest, the greatest number of riders and the greatest potential markets. greatest, the greatest number of riders and the greatest potential markets.
We need a go.
Just, if the county, just, just a comment. The county is encouraging the building of these developments in places such as Northern Westchester. I think, and I know, based on conversations that we've had with Norma in the past, that when people put in their applications for affordable housing, most, and I'll go as far as to say maybe a majority of people put in their applications to remain or to move to Southern Westchester. And perhaps it would be important, if you want to encourage applicants to move to Northern Westchester, that, you know, it become affordable on all levels, not just the fact that they might be able to afford a unit of housing, but they actually be able to afford the transportation required to get to and from that unit when it's so much more significantly further from employment, et cetera.
Which comes first, the chicken or the egg, right? The transportation or the housing?
How are these new app-based opportunities finding their way to the discussion? How do they get into it? Is there an active going after trying to find those solutions, or are they waiting for them to come into play and identify themselves to the municipality?
Well, our research on it, you know, has, is really just emerging. And there, we've been in discussions with, some communities have expressed some interest in doing this, in Tarrytown, Sleepy Hollow, there's a new development, and they're thinking about it. So we're, we're kind of following the lead of the municipalities, or Westchester Community College, just getting students from the Valhalla Train Station up to the campus, because we can't get a 40-foot bus into the train station area. So they reached out to us. So we're, we're, it's, we feel it's in our interest to help them succeed if they want to do something, and to help them plan it so that it's done right, so it doesn't compete with us, it doesn't increase traffic, like, like I said. So we're kind of getting a sense of the interest right now, and, and there definitely has been some.
To follow up on Andrea's comment, remember the slide that we saw for the income levels? If we're talking about home ownership affordable, family of four can earn up to $93,000. So that family is likely to have a car. If we're talking about rental, where the limitations are 50 or 60%, that's a more difficult, that, that family may not have a car.
Right.
But I think a lot, a lot of the northern affordable units are, are ownership.
They include jitney, well, not necessarily ownership. There are some rental, like Bridal Side and the development that's being proposed in Lewisboro. But the developers are all, in those cases, are providing some jitney service, some private bus service, so that they at least can get people to the train stations in the morning and pick them up in the afternoons.
Actually, that's a good way to deal with it. It's not cheap for the developer, but important.
Yeah, but I also like to make the comment, just as you're saying, that although they can get to the train and to the home, that there's extended things that they need also, being able to get to the grocery store, being able to get to the doctor's office. And when you don't have that...
But what they found is by providing the transportation for one person to be able to get to the train, that leaves the car with the other person sometimes. That's actually what they found. So at least by providing the jitney service in the crunch commuting times, it was, they were able to leave the car with mom or whoever was staying home with children or whatever.
Where they have the car.
Where they have the car, exactly. So it did provide a balance.
Anything else? Thank you, Naomi. I don't have any other business, do you?
No, we're done.
Okay. Everyone remember May 1st today, you have to get your financial forms in today.
I've got a couple of them here.
You can give them to Norma if she'll deposit them. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second, all favor. Okay, see you next month at Westchester Committee College.